We will call the meeting to order for our meeting of June 6, 2017. Jennifer?
Yes, Mayor Downing?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Kidd here. Councilmember Brooke?
Present.
Councilmember Collins? Councilmember Collins is planning to join us via speakerphone.
He will be in there.
Yes, he should be. The conference bridge is open. Councilmember Collins?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Gates?
Present.
Councilmember Meredith?
Here.
Councilmember Weddell?
Here.
Thank you. Oh, excuse me. Acting Manager West?
Present.
Attorney Blor?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, I've invited Councilmember Brooke to lead a simple speech.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As I've said on a number of occasions previous, attending the city council meetings even providing that is as long as in eight years has become a really a special part of my life. Tonight is a special example of why I like to come to city council meetings when we have the opportunity to recognize achievements, extraordinary achievement. We have a chance to recognize citizens of our community who have done great things in their life. It gives us a chance to honor them and recognize them. Tonight is no exception. I've invited Deputy Mayor as Kidd to come to the diocese and invite Allen Bernard to join her at the diocese.
Well, good evening. Allen, if you'll step over here. It's such a pleasure to see you. Allen is a stalwart volunteer in our community. So many. He supports public safety. He does so much good for the community. You're in and you're out. And tonight, we have this special occasion to present you with the proclamation declaring June 19 through June 25 as Wings of Freedom Days. For as the Collins Foundation Wings of Freedom Tour of the World War II vintage Boeing B-17 Flying Fortress, Consolidated B-24 Liberator, B-25 Mitchell, and North American P-51 Mustang will take place at William R. Fairchild International Airport, June 21 through June 23. And whereas the rich World War II history of these remarkable aircraft will be showcased for all generations to tour, to ride, and experience. And whereas these historic aircraft were piloted and crewed by American servicemen who served bravely and in many cases made the ultimate sacrifice. And whereas the successful missions of these remarkable aircraft, the fighter support aircraft and their brave pilots and crews hastened the end of World War II and victory for the United States. And whereas Clallum County is home to many of these heroic pilots and crew who played such a key role in creating the freedom that we enjoy today as Americans. Whereas Clallum County is home to many of these heroic pilots and crew, and now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Clallum County Commissioners, Port Angeles City Council, and the Port of Port Angeles Board of Commissioners, in recognition of these historic aircraft, their pilots and crews, and all World War II aircraft, we do declare June 19 through 25 as Wings of Freedom Days. I'll present this to you, and I'd like a few words from your board.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I didn't know I was going to have to stand up here and embarrass myself. Well, I should tell you that this is the eighth visit since 2004 as a stop coordinator for Collins Foundation to bring the World War II bombers up here. But I should say the purpose of this, it essentially to show these airplanes, but they're just the backdrop. The airplanes are the tool to demonstrate the cost of freedom and to teach our young people what our veterans from previous wars had done to provide what we have today. It's real simple. If we don't know what we have, we don't know how we got it, then we don't know what we have to protect. So the World War II bombers are a tool to facilitate this communication. I would mention that this year, the theme is Salute to Veterans, and so I will be putting aboard the B-17 complimentary flight on Wednesday when they land, a group of mostly World War II veterans and some of them that flew aboard the B-17 during World War II. This year, I'm really tickled to say that the port has thrown in to assist with this visit of the Wings of Freedom by ratcheting up the program and providing a lot of other things that would make it interesting to stick around, especially on that Wednesday when they arrive. That would include in the afternoon, a vintage car show right up there on the tarmac. The bombers would be taxiing right by with possibly 40 to 50 vintage cars, possibly a double A fuel dragster out there to make noise and be obnoxious. And we're hoping to get the Coast Guard helicopter and crew, they haven't confirmed, but we're planning on it, hopefully, to be there and possibly hot air balloon rides. Then in the afternoon, a live band starting at four to play Good Time Rock and Roll, my favorite, and a no-host barbecue hosted by Red Lion, so you can hang out and eat barbecue in the afternoon and the evening and really make a day of it out there and see the airplanes. So I want to thank the port for their support. Dan has been coordinating with me on it and done a fine job. I appreciate that, Dan. So we look forward to it, and we hope that all of you come out and partake of it. And if you have family members that are veterans, please bring them out so we can say thank you or shake their hand. Thank you so much for this.
Alan always speaks on behalf of the veterans. We're so proud of you for doing that. Thank you so much. And now we have another proclamation.
Yeah, well, actually, we have a presentation.
Presentation by Chief Brian Smith.
We have Chief Smith in there.
Chief Smith, if you can come down. I'll turn the mic over to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So on my right is my good friend Doc Robinson from Serenity House. And if she can stop laughing, I need Program Director Viola Ware to step up here and Deputy Chief Jason Vea to step up here. We are very excited to talk about the accomplishments of these two special people. And I'll try to tell the story quick, then I'm going to turn it over to Doc, and then we're going to present them some awards. So in 2015, then Sergeant Vea had left the drug task force, returned to patrol, and being creative like he is, he took a program that we had that's grant-funded, but it's ideas to put us in the downtown and out patrolling places we don't patrol. So Jason decided to do something really simple, just go out on foot and walk around. And he put in many, many hours and, you know, triple digits in mileage on foot. Many of you have seen him down there. Councilman Meredith complimented him once at a meeting, and it became sort of a mainstay of APD. So from that downtown foot patrol program, Jason established a partnership with Viola, and they began a regular, I'll call her outreach social worker and police department foot patrol beat to do outreach to people who otherwise wouldn't necessarily talk to us, would be people that are in need of services. And if you think about this concept, it's not complicated, but those two put in, my math tells me several hundred miles of foot time over many months, talking to hundreds of people, reaching out in many corners of everywhere in our downtown and our waterfront for people that need housing, they need addiction services, they need maybe somebody else to pay attention to them and to care about what's going on with them. Some of them actually might have an issue that they want to talk to the police department about. So this partnership between these two has opened doors for the police department in many ways, and this notion of the partnership of police and social workers now kind of one of those best practices you read about all over the place, and these two invented it here.
They did indeed. It's called the Housing Beat, and it's now written about all over the nation. So we have two people here who are what we mean when we use the word heroes. They take their own time. They go deep into places that the rest of us would prefer not to go. They do it at risk of thrills. That's an ice-covered log. You don't want to fall off in the middle of winter. You know what our winter was like this past winter? They go and talk to people who may be in distress, they may be angry, they may be in lots of different conditions, and they gradually coax them back into our world. There's a name for it. It's called progressive engagement. And these two people have made it possible so that folks who are living deep in the woods are now accessing shelter, are now gaining services, are now starting to take a place in our world again. And that's our wisdom.
So to honor both of them, we have two awards, the Police Star to Deputy Chief Vea and the Citizen Service Medal to Viola Ware. And we want to say thank you, both of you, for your strong work and what they've started, you will see it continue. So thank you very much.
I have some other issues. I'm going to remain here at the diocese. I'd like to invite Ron Jones to come to the diocese. I'd like to invite... Can I take care of the mic? You could just stand there. I have a proclamation I'd like to read this evening in recognition of a life of service to life of teaching. Proclamation in recognition of the public service of Ronald Jones. Whereas Ronald Jones has been the director of the Port Angeles High School Orchestra since 1975 and after many years of dedicated teaching, has decided to heed life's cure... cue, maybe cure... That may not have been totally a... It's a... Retired after 42 years as the Port Angeles High School Orchestra Director. And whereas over his career, Ron has reprised his role as a successful instructor by leading the Port Angeles High School Orchestra to nine top three trophies at the state music championships since 1998, more than 30 at the Northwest Orchestra Festivals since 1989, and has earned nine trophies at the Washington Chapter of the Washington Street Teachers' Association and Western Washington University Orchestra Festival since it began in 2015. These are only a partial medley of the awards his students have earned under his leadership. Whereas his upbeat teaching style has resonated with students of all ages from fourth through the 12th grade, his orchestra is often placed at the top or near the top of both the Northwest Orchestra Festival and the state ensemble contest. His students under his maestro's baton have performed at Carnegie Hall every year, every four years since 1989, a total of eight times. And whereas in addition to his extended gig at Port Angeles High School, in his role as music instructor, he has received numerous local, state, and national awards for his work as a community leader, including the Port Angeles Education Foundation Distinguished Service Award, the Red Cross quote-unquote Real Hero Award, and the Clallum County Community Service Award. Whereas Ron has been recognized with the rare and career-capping honor of being named to the Washington Interscholastic Association... Excuse me. Washington Interscholastic Activities Association Hall of Fame in its 2017 class. Whereas over the last four decades at Port Angeles High School, and throughout the 400... The how many members in the school district do you teach? Students.
The I teacher that are...
Sisterhood.
I don't know.
A lot.
In the whole...
Hundreds, hundreds.
Four thousand. But there are almost 700 students on the street. Yeah, four thousand.
Seven hundred. One more. Throughout the school district, Ron has not worked solo, but has been accompanied by his wife Debbie. Please stand, Debbie. You can join him up there. Thank you. I love to do these things in front of women. This duo, those two great people, have over a course of their work provided countless hours of leadership and support to the community's music program. Their devotion to the community is worthy of our most sincere bravo. Now therefore, I, Patrick Downey, Mayor, without missing a beat, on behalf of the city council of Port Angeles, do hereby recognize the public service of Ron Jones and thank him for his many years of devoted service to our community. And we on the council, in unison, wish him all the best in his future performances. While this may be his grand finale in one endeavor, we look forward to his encores yet to come. Thank you. I'd like to turn the mic over... Will you mind if I ask? Turn the mic over to Superintendent Mark Jackson, who will continue this presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Downing. Ron, we have a small extra surprise for you this evening to reflect and honor your 42 years of teaching here in our community. So Ron and Debbie, council members and community members, here tonight, it is my true honor to introduce this group of local musicians, all of whom were students of yours. In addition, we are very pleased to say that these musicians represent all of your first seven Carnegie Performing Orchestras, from the first ones in 1989 to 2013. Your current orchestra has been busy preparing for tomorrow night's performance and the end of their school year, and we didn't want to add another thing on their plate to include them in this evening, in this evening tonight. So tonight's musicians include, from the 1989 trip, Tracy Winters playing cello. From 1993, Brenda Francis Thomas playing viola. 1997, Clint Thomas playing bass. From 2001, Scott Smith playing cello. From 2005, Jaleen Dahlman playing second violin. 2009, Chandra Johnson playing first violin. Jesse Major playing viola, viola. And 2013, Elizabeth Helwood playing second violin. Leah Marsh playing first violin.
Thank you so much. And I am not very good with words, and I'll start crying, but I just wanted to thank both Ron and Debbie from all of our hearts, plus all the hearts of thousands of musicians and lamps you've touched. And we are going to perform two pieces. The first one is "Hallelujah" by Leonard Cohen. The second one is "Bluegrass Country" by Carol Nunez.
Ron, I have one more gift. So since it is the all-cities performance that we are celebrating, I thought it would be recognizable to let you know what you created and what you have accomplished in this city, in this town, in this community. So I was able to have Tina take a shot at the last performance at the gym to honor Ron for all the wonderful performances that he has given to us as a city. And Ron, it's with great pleasure that I give this picture to you that when you look at it, you can take it with us. Oh, the wonderful stuff that you've done for us as well. Thank both of you for fantastic work. Please join me, Ron. One last...
I would just like to thank, first of all, Mayor Downey, councilmen and women, thank you very much. But I also want to thank the community of Port Angeles. I came here with no public school experience in 1975. This was my first gig out of college. I think it's unusual that someone would come and stay at a place as long as I did, but I think a lot of it had to do with, I didn't think I could get a job anyplace else. It's that old bird in the hand line. It has been, every single day has been a joy to work with young people throughout the community. And I'll be the first one to say that it hasn't happened without, I skinned my knees a few times and fell down, but you know, the community supported what I was doing, what the school district was doing, what these young people, what our kids were doing, and I thank you very much.
Debbie, would you like to say something?
I'll get those, Scott.
Thank you.
So, uh...
Thank you. Thank you.
I would be, I think, fairly stating this, I doubt seriously someone else in the state of Washington, perhaps even nowhere else in the United States, who's seen one thirty minutes of still... That was wonderful. My wife and I had known Ron since, for many years, almost all the years we've been here. And I remember the first time we accompanied as orchestra parents, went down to Gresham, Oregon, and as chaperones way back when. And see the maturation of Ron, the maturation of our music program culminated this evening. Thank you. I'm sure all of you are thrilled to have been here this evening. So, without further ado, and because we have posted publicly, we have public hearings that should begin as close to as possible six-thirty, maybe, and operate as a plan annual amendment and wetlands protection letters, I'm going to skip into the agenda item F, public hearings, and we'll get back to the agenda, including public comments here as quickly as we can. But I think we need to be associated to those who may be here specifically. For first, the 2017 comprehensive plan annual amendment, and so we'll do that next.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor and council, tonight, we are presenting to you the 2017 comprehensive plan annual amendment, which has been provided at the request of council from last year, 2016 update. City council asked staff to move forward with a number of modifications and improvements to the comprehensive plan. And tonight, Planning Manager Brecki is going to walk us through some of those specific changes to the document. And so, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Brecki.
Good evening, community members and council members. My name is Allison Brecki, planning manager for the city of Port Angeles. And as Director West said, I'm here just to give an overview of the amendment that we're considering tonight. So, as Mr. West mentioned, city council did first learn about the highlights of our anticipated amendment at the work session in January of this year. Staff then did follow through the amendment cycle and did present just recently to the planning commission through a public hearing the amendments that you're going to see tonight. The city did not receive any amendments proposed by the actual greater community. I'm going to just kind of categorize the amendments into four groups. The first one being a revision to our transportation element of the plan. This actually is touching on some analysis work that I'll touch on a little bit. The second amendment has to do with the revision to our economic development element. The third is the, really, I think, what is the most exciting change is a total reformat and rearrangement of the document itself. And then lastly, there is introduction of implementation chapter and matrix. And these are described in detail in on page F-173 of the council packet tonight. So, the first amendment is the transportation element. It's dealing with actually the Washington State Department of Transportation request that was delivered to the city in June of 2016. It was actually delivered to us in a time, in a manner that we couldn't address it with the last year greater amendment process. So, we addressed it this year. And the primary request from WashDOT was to do a level service analysis within the boundaries of the city, dealing with intersections as well as roadway segments. The analysis is now included in the plan itself in appendix D. And there, from the analysis, there was only one roadway segment that was determined to be deficient, and it has to do with a category of failing grade essentially in the transportation category. And as we are presenting it to, within the plan, we have several policies already within our transportation element and capital facilities element that contain several policies that address how the city plans to deal with deficient roadway segments. And that is how we are treating or approaching the mitigation for that one deficiency that was found. Otherwise, the great analysis itself is now a part of the plan as appendix D. The second amendment has to do with the city wanting to support some great projects that are occurring in the community, specifically the Mount Angeles View Housing, Boys and Girls Club, Farming Arts Center, Fairer Marine Center, Life Center, and Williams Short Pool Projects. And so, some language was added into the economic development element specific to objectives that support these projects. I just want to make a quick note that all the elemental objectives are now a part of the implementation matrix, which I'll touch on in a bit. So, the document reforming, reformatting and rearrangement, again, there were a lot of changes that really helped the document become a user-friendly document, something that might be actually enjoyable to read through. There's images and graphs now and not just a text document. And also, the order of the document itself has changed, where the city is able to really highlight the fact that the comprehensive plan is the foundation of our greater city policy, is the foundation of our other city plans. And that is immediately the first thing that a reader will see in the document, being in the chapter one introduction. There's also the, an emphasis toward the elements itself, and they have been pushed to the front of the document. And there's a general comment section in each element that really just touches on the relationship to the greater plan. Chapter 11, our implementation matrix or chapter, this is really where the city is outlining the priorities, and it's specific to the objectives that are more of our action tasks within the plan, and they are now prioritized in the implementation matrix. The community profile, which is a great community profile, we have credit, I would highly recommend it, is now just an appendix, so it's still a part of the plan itself, but just not the first thing that a reader will read. So, with the work session occurring in January, the council was able to talk to staff about their priorities. And from that discussion, staff worked on creating an implementation chapter and matrix. And what you see now is a great table that includes all of the objectives within the elements, and then also a priority in terms of short, medium, and long. So, short being within the next two years, medium being within two to four years, and long being between, or four years and greater. And it also allows the city to mention partners in the community that are working with us on these objectives. I want to also just note, with this process, the city was able to identify objectives that were no longer relevant or had perhaps been completed. And so, there was a great update process in just eliminating some of the objectives from the plan itself. And again, that's included in the 173 section of the council packet. Overall, staff, a part of this process, of course, is reviewing the municipal code and making sure that the changes proposed are in accordance with the Greater Growth Management Act. And staff has found that to be the case with three conclusions. The comprehensive plan was last thoroughly reviewed and updated last year, and that this annual update is actually a part of the city recognized annual amendment cycle. We find that the amendments are not in conflict with the city's development regulations or capital facilities plan, and will not reduce the level of service required by the comprehensive plan. And then further, we find it to be in compliance with our section of codes, section 1804040. And so, next steps for the council's consideration tonight is, of course, opening a public hearing, continuing the public hearing to June 20th, and then also conducting the first reading of the ordinance itself. And I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just add a few elements that I think are really important to the council conversation this evening. First, I want to recognize city council in that it was council's request that we actually incorporate the implementation chapter so that we can come back with actually measurable outcomes, so that we can measure our progress with the implementation of the comprehensive plan, and really follow and track how much progress the community is making to fulfill the overall community vision. I think that's really important. I think, too, it's important to mention the objectives that you see in that implementation matrix are designed to follow the council prioritized policies of the comprehensive plan that was done earlier this year as part of the work session process. I think, too, it's important that we also are striving and have a work in progress, a condensed version of the document, so that we have something that isn't all about the state regulations and Growth Management Act, but that really focuses on the community vision and implementation that the community would like to see. So, we'll be bringing that document forward to city council in the very near future. And I just wanted to touch on those items. But again, we are available for questions and encourage you to go ahead and open the public hearing when you're ready.
Well, I guess one of the things I want to explain to folks is, I've been pretty involved in this process. And I know that when we were here at this time last year, passing the first revision to the comprehensive plan that had happened in a while, at that point, I stated I was not happy with the plan, and that I only would pass it, because I know we had to check off that little box for the federal government, if come January, we would be able to look at a revised plan. So, we'd have from June to January to really look at a revised plan that would have implementation in it, so that we could check to see whether we had been moving forward. Unluckily, or how life happens, come January, we just got the new, I guess we started looking into that process beginning January. So, we didn't have something completed by January, as I had hoped. And that, like I said, that was my, I voted with it with the idea that come January, we'd have something like that, so we could start cleaning it up, so that come now, we would have something perfect. So, well, so we are now just getting these revisions. And I appreciate staff's input, because I know it's a huge task. There is no doubt about it. There's been a lot of time spent. There's been a lot of money spent on this plan. But I got to admit that I'm not happy with this plan, because we still don't know, even with our implementation chapter, whether we are actually meeting our vision, you know? We don't have something that's really specific as to making sure that every dollar we spent is moving us forward in the vision that we want for Port Angeles to be in the next 20 years. And that's the reason for having a comprehensive plan. So, and I know that this little plan that we talked about, I said, okay, because this plan is huge. It's got a lot of pages. It's got a gazillion goals and policies in place that we put in there, because that's what we had wanted, you know, we wanted the best. So, we kept adding things to it. So, this minimal plan, this baby plan, as we kind of called it, would have just, let's just start with the things we can get done and things we can measure, and to make sure that we're moving in that right direction. Well, that was the discussion we had, and I thought that, okay, at this point in life, we would have both of those. So, you could see one that meets the federal requirements and one that would really meet our needs, to make sure that we knew that we were moving forward in the right direction. So, unluckily, at this time, we also don't have that small plan. So, and I asked, so what happens if this one doesn't get passed the way it is? Well, there doesn't seem to be, there's a couple of things that it would kind of slow down, but nothing terrible would happen, because we have the transportation thing that could be added as a little amendment, and then I think it was a definition of a wetland thing that could be done in a different way. So, it would keep us to the old plan until we had a really decent plan done. So, that, I think, is what I would recommend. I know that it'd be great. I know that staff would love to get this off their list, but I'm afraid that this does not meet what I would like to see. We were given, you know, the, because one of the ways to know whether you're meeting where you want to go or not meeting where you want to go is figuring out where you are and where you want to go. And then that way, you can measure, huh, we're getting better at this or we're getting worse at this, but at least we would know one way or another. So, I know one of the things that the departments are working on is putting together a level of service, which would say, okay, you know, so for the fire department, they tell us, you know, how long does it take for an EMS to respond? Eight minutes, okay? Do we need this? Yes or no? Yes, we did need it, you know? And it says 4.23 minutes. We really met that goal really well. Well, that we know. That's a measurable, that we know. We need this kind of thing in our comprehensive plan, so we know that we're meeting our goals and we're getting to that vision for 20 years from now. So, that's where I'm at with trying to push forward with this comprehensive plan. I know that in the long run, it's going to make all of the city departments work more efficiently towards our old, our vision. The community did an amazing job of putting together a good vision, working in different meetings, trying to set where we want to go. So, we have a good idea of where we want to go. Now, we just need to establish the measures to make sure that we're moving in that direction. So, like I said, I just wanted you all to know where I'm standing in regards to this plan. I am determined, like I said, I know I sounded like a broken record for many, many months, and I will continue to, this comprehensive plan is critical. It needs to guide our budget. It needs to guide our capital facilities plan. It needs to guide everything we do. So, I realized that, as I was going through this packet again tonight, that one of the things I want to know from everything that's in this packet is, where does that say that in the comprehensive plan, that this is what we're going to do, and who set that priority, and how do we know this is pushing us in the right direction? So, anyway, like I said, just wanted you guys to know.
Mr. Reddick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to just talk with the community a minute, that every one of us up here brings a different skill set that's available to do what's best in the best interests of the community. And what I know about Councilmember Brooke is that this is her area of expertise, and I do appreciate her taking the time to dig into this, and I do value her input on this. So, I just want to let you know, Councilmember Brooke, that I'll be backing you with how you vote and how you proceed. Thank you.
Mr. Collins, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
I don't want to exclude you from this discussion. Do you have any comments you'd like to share with us before I... Do we have any comments you'd like to share with us before I open the public hearing? Have any questions else there?
Sure, I'd be happy to make a comment. I've been working on this comprehensive plan since the formation of Growth Management It's a work in progress. It's meant to be dynamic. It changes, it's allowed to change every year, but the major changes usually take place every over seven years or so, depending how long. And it's a long-range document. Just to make the record clear, we're not following federal regulations. We're following the state law, which empowers local governments to be able to approve its development. It's an enabling act, which we're required to do in order to approve subdivisions, approve the development of power leaders and businesses and things like that. I agree with what Councilmember Brooke says about the ideas of measuring and implementing and trying to make things work. When this first started, there were new ideas like the capital facilities plan and level of service standards, which, when they were first put in this plan, people didn't really understand or follow as well as they are starting to do now. And I think that there's nothing in these regulations or amendments that will discourage or prevent better understanding of capital facility planning, which will try to better our understanding of level of service. These are responding directly through the Washington State Department of Transportation requests on level of service, and it affects how they will fund projects, transportation projects in Fort Angeles. So I don't want us to slow down that progress. I think we need to move forward with these amendments and try to do the kinds of things that Sissy thinks will actually help us to do it better. And I agree with that. I think it will help us do it better, and this is a step in the right direction. We don't need to not take this step. In fact, I would worry if we don't prove these amendments, that our funding sources at the Department of Transportation could be compromised for a period of time, and I don't want to see that happen.
Thank you, Brad. Let me just make one observation, Sissy, to me, to all of you, and to the public. Interestingly enough, I think I probably precede all of you, because I served on the City Plan Commission, probably my first civic activity here in the mid to my 70s and through much of the 1980s. I served on the Plan Commission. My name appears on a document, comprehensive plan. And I reflect back, that's 40 years or more ago, 40 years, seems like a lifetime action almost, Sissy, like that. But I want to say that I agree with everything that's been said. But would want to, however, I think it's fair to say, make the observation, I think we've come a long, long way. The document that I, my name appears 40-odd years ago, looks rather unsophisticated compared to what I see today. And I agree with what all of you have said. I just, I want to compliment the staff and the effort they're doing. I look at what's going on in this community in a variety of things. We have, for a city the size we are, we have some, have a very, very heavy attendant. You can talk to people like Nathan and Craig and Dan and everybody that I see at the city staff, know that our city is maturing, growing up, becoming something way different than it was in 1974. So, Sissy, right, we need to, I need to even make it the very best, as I, in my, the very best that it could be. I want to, I want to, I want to compliment and commend the staff in moving the football in the right direction. Anybody else? Dan?
Thank you. Allison, thanks for your diligent work on all this. Councilmember Brooke, I really admire how you've got a great skill of getting through hundreds of pages of documents and staying with it. So thank you for your feedback on that. We've talked for the last three and a half years that I've been around here about the importance of measurables and metrics and understanding if we're getting the things accomplished that we're targeting. And I definitely see some of that in this implementation section. And in fact, in a lot of cases, it's very, very measurable if we're accomplishing some of those. I'm wondering if Allison or perhaps Rick West could speak a little bit more detail for us on the method that you plan to use that implementation of matrix to keep us up to speed on your comfort zone of progress that's happening.
So I'd be happy to speak to that. I think it's really relevant that much of this year, relative to council policy discussion, has been related to how we measure moving forward. And certainly, that discussion has come up relative to the strategic planning exercise, relative to the comprehensive plan, relative to city budget, the capital facilities plan, and other documents that we deal with. Councilmember Brooke mentioned level of service, and that also is extremely important. I think that, at the end of the day, we will provide a document that truly does look at more of a comprehensive approach to measurability relative to the overall community vision and the services that staff perform on a daily basis. I think the goal would be to actually combine and integrate the matrix that you see before you in the comprehensive plan with the strategic plan, with those level of service documents, and really have a comprehensive approach to how we measure, that we have checkoff boxes when those tasks are to be complete, and that we have predictable dates, timeframes, and metrics that we can expect at the end of the day. So we will get there, but I do want to mention and reiterate the vast difference that the document before you is as compared to prior comprehensive documents, comprehensive plan documents. We have made giant strides in a positive direction, in a more user-friendly direction. Pictures, graphics, a web-friendly version of the plan is what you see before you today. There was no implementation chapter previously, and it took a very long time to look at and measure and actually go element to element to determine what those objectives were previously. So we're getting there. We have more work to do. We recognize that. But we also have some state-restricted timeframes relative to updates of the comprehensive plan, and we have a June window by which this needs to be done. As Councilmember Brooke mentioned, you know, the critical points that the state has asked of us are really getting that Washington State Department of Transportation level of service complete, as well as the wetlands ordinance that you will see on the next item on the agenda this evening. But again, this is a good step in the right direction, and we have many more steps to come.
So I'd like one more, just to kind of wrap it up. I would like to, yes, agree that this is a, we've gotten to a much better level, but our funding, I know that Brad mentioned that our funding source could be sacrificed, and as I understood, that that's not the case. When I spoke with Dr. West, because we would turn in our, the transportation part, we would not sacrifice any of our funding, so that would not be an issue. The other thing is that I know personally, I have voted in the past expecting to get this plan done right away, and it has not come. So, you know, this is a year later, and I do understand staff is really busy, and this is an amazing step forward, but it's not, we can do better. So we've gotten to this point. I do not want to pass this plan as is, because then I know it'll be another year before we do another one of these. And this is not good enough to drop. I think if we do it for next month, or in two months, or three months, the state will still accept our input. So it's not an issue that our window is only now. We can turn it in in three months and have a much better document at that time with measurables that can actually, you know, follow through with each one of the individual goals. So personally, I don't, I'm not ready to vote on this. I think that we can put this off for three months. It's not going to take care, our funding is not going to go away, we're not going to sacrifice that, and I think we can get a better document. And then it's only three months for staff, and then you guys have this crossed off your list, because I know you guys are like, oh my God, this is never going to go away. It's not, until we get this right. I'm sorry. And I've got two and a half years on the council, and this is exactly what I'm going to push, because this is going to get us to the vision that we all want. So that's, you know, I would say, let's, you know, whether it takes us three, six, nine months, let's keep pushing and get this right. It really will make a difference on where we're going in the future, and it is not going to hurt us for any funding, and it's not an issue with the state for it. So that's, like I said, with that said, I would hope that we can postpone this for however long it takes to get this right.
Okay, let's, let me open the public hearing today. Those of you who are here with us would like to take the opportunity to speak to this document, to the discussion, just, you know, help. Please come forward. Let's take your name, your address for the record. Go ahead. Okay. Age before duty.
What's he mean by that? You can start the timer now. My name is Phil Atkinson, and I live on the west side, and I'm really excited about our city. I think it's a great place to live. I wouldn't want to live anywhere else, and I've been all over the world. And so to the point of this plan, there was an adage somebody taught me many, many years ago, is that the price is long forgotten after the quality, the quality is long removed after the price is forgotten. So if you're late, well, you're going to get beat about the head and shoulders, but when, at the end of the day, if you do a good job, you'll be happy that you did. And so to Councilmember Brooke's observation, I would like to comment that I have extensive experience in developing weapon systems for the undersea spacecraft and also aircraft. And we use measurable goals, that's the only way we got it done. And there is commercial software packages available, very extraordinary, that have got extensive user base, have been debugged for the past 20 years, and are relatively easy to use and are very inexpensive per seat. So I would encourage to achieve a granularity that is visible and can be rolled up to the top, so that you got a good, you got a good feel for where you are. Now, mind you, I know very well how scary detailed planning is, because when you make a plan in detail, then somebody's going to hold your feet to the fire later to be there. So I would encourage you to consider using software tools that are readily available in the open general marketplace. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I'm Dale Wilson. I do live out on the west side, not too far from the field here. Most of this plan that I've looked at is well over my pay grade, probably over my comprehension, but there's one part of it that I think that I do have some insight on, and that is the part, I think it was on slide two, about the remodeling or the infrastructure around the Mount Angeles project. And my bloodballed tonight when I saw that the city had fallen victim to or been in compliance with the county's fraud that talks about building a boys and girls club out there. They may do that, but it has nothing to do with what that part is going for. That is going to destroy 33 homes. Think about that for a second. You're going to vote eventually, hopefully not tonight, hopefully you'll take this out of the plan, but you're going to vote to destroy those 33 homes. And let me tell you a little bit about that. It said something about affordable housing up here. Well, the Peninsula Housing Authority is at market rate. It's not any less than anybody else that has a property for rent. They will try to charge the same market rate that everybody else in town for similar square footage. So it's not any warm and fluffy market or affordable housing. It's not so we can build a boys and girls club. And bear in mind, the county came out with 16 different official documents, each and every one of them talking about this $900,000 grant from the Opportunity Fund. Each and every one of those documents said that it was going to build a boys and girls club, and that was all a lie. Now, to show you how clever they were, those documents that had legal heft, they didn't have boys and girls club on it. But everything that went out to the public, including the public announcement, the public notice that opened the hearing, that announced the hearing for discussion of this $900,000 grant, was actually sent to the daily paper, and it had in there the $900,000 was going for the construction of a boys and girls club. And it wasn't. It's going for infrastructure, which includes tearing down 33 perfectly good homes. Now, I tried, I started about eight or nine months ago, to get the Public Housing Authority to issue a request for proposal, so that people could know about these homes, know their availability, be able to line up the one house member that we have in the county who was several months behind at all times, and be able to do something with these homes, do something creative to repurpose these homes, or find another lot to build this new improvement on. But for some reason, they have dissuaded, they have played hard to get, the Peninsula Housing Authority has played very hard to get, and dissuaded people who did show an interest in these homes. And my only, and bear in mind, there's going to be a gaggle of private investors that are going to be backing this entire project. They're going to build some new homes out there. But these, too, will be market-rate homes. There will be private investors that are profiting off of these market-rate, government-backed rental homes. They won't name those investors. So as good as the city, warm and fuzzy as the city might feel about passing this infrastructure project, the Mount Angeles project, I hope you will at least excise that part of it unless and until the Peninsula Housing Authority will make every effort to repurpose these homes or find a new area. You know, Matt Rainwater, who has come up with this idea for pennies for quarters, he had opened up his little organization, and within just a very few months, he found an excellent site for him to build these quarters for homeless veterans. And there's plenty of property out there. I think Mr. Gates would agree that there's plenty of properties out there available that you could spend this million dollars for, so that you could keep those 33 homes and build these other 66 homes that the Housing Authority is talking about building. So now you've got 90 homes, and you know housing is at a premium here. We don't really have any affordable housing. Almost everybody's paying market rate for rents. So if these homes can stay, yes, they're 30, 40 years old, not 70 years old, as somebody quoted in the paper, but they're 30, 40 years old. Some of our leading citizens grew up in those project homes, and they are still in very good shape. The Peninsula Housing Authority has done a great job of keeping them up, keeping them well taken care of, keeping roof on them, keeping siding on them, keeping floors level and all that. So the homes are great. They need to be moved, and maybe not all of them can be moved, but some of them can. Some of them need to be repurposed, and the city needs to be the guardian of our tax money. If the tax money went to build those homes, we certainly don't want to be the city that spent tax money to destroy 33 homes. You may have noticed in the paper a month or so ago, where they actually floated an apartment building across from Victoria in order to preserve and to add to their affordable housing. Let's do something creative here. Let's do not pass this document, at least with that part of it in there, for the Mount Angeles view, that is going to allow the city to spend taxpayer money to destroy 33 perfectly good homes. Let's at least show the people that we have that much vision and integrity to protect the money that's already been spent for these homes and to make sure that our tax money is not spent to destroy it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Would like to come, please come forward.
Hi, Mary Lee Smith, PL Box 248. I'm a little tired, because I just got through driving here, 850 miles. I absolutely agree, Sissy, that we need to look at things from, so that we can track things, that we can see what our return on investment is, that we can see what, you know, the project really cost us in the long run. One thing I've been doing a lot of reading about is beyond budgeting. And this came out of a- And this came out of a February 2003 Harvard Business Review article about what some of the Swedish banks are doing, some of the different industries around the country and world are doing to get away from this 1930s idea of a fixed performance contract, fixed budgets, the whole concept of spend it or you lose it. You know, we, you know, last year we budgeted this amount. Look, gay, we're below it. Turns out, that's really not the most effective way to handle a budget. There are newer ideas and lively reading. They're kind of exciting because they really do keep costs down. Instead of the traditional budget, it's looking much further into the vision, into the future. It's not just this next year. And I had to make notes. It sets longer term goals. It's based on bench marks, returns on investment, key performance, cash flow, cost ratios, customer satisfaction, which is something we've kind of failed at in Port Angeles. You know, we've made some moves that have really made people unhappy, like cutting out services for the after school children, forgetting the children, making them, you know, go away from the port, from the pier and, you know, stay out of downtown. This is all coming back to bite us. Because the more we don't remember all of our citizens, the more dissatisfied they are, and the less, you know, more disenfranchised they are. So that should be included in these, in these concepts that you're doing, the goals. Quality is a real issue. Because we've, in the past, made some bad, poor quality decisions based on money, such as our land, like the dump, Mount Trashmore. And, you know, I'd like to see us look at this comprehensive plan with some new ideas, with some new eyes. And I think that's the only way we're really going to assure our future here. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else, please come forward.
I'm too tired.
Hi, my name is Rachel Lee. Live at 3124 South Peabody. So I am going to talk about what Mr. Wilson was talking about, the Housing Authority. And one of the things that's going to be happening up there that a great deal, many people do not know about is when they bring in the apartments and everything, they are going to open up, I forget if it's 15 or 18, but it's going to be HUD 811 vouchers. Eight HUD 11, those HUD 811 vouchers are meant to be for people that are going homeless. So if you have somebody that's in an apartment or is elderly, rent goes up higher every year, it usually does. Or food stamps get cut and they can't afford to live. What ends up happening is you apply for the HUD 811. We do have HUD 811s here. However, there are, the landlords are not willing to take those HUD 811s at this time. So this does help out with housing and the cuts of cost. There's going to be a great deal of more people coming into the housing that are going to be out there. Not only that, but one of the other things I did want to talk about is that those houses that they're going to demolish, anybody is welcome to take them. They are free. All you have to do is pay for the cost to move them. That's going to be anywhere from about like $3,000, $4,000 to move the houses. Also, I went to the pennies for quarters that was going on, and I talked to Mr. Rainwater about it, if he was going to use the houses for that or not. And he said no. I said, would you be willing to use some of the recycled materials or something for it? So there is some, you know, we can use those materials to use that and recycle the materials to build some houses and different things. So it isn't completely lost. I mean, but I want people to be aware that if we think a little bit outside of the box, we can really help with the housing and different things in this community. And it isn't as detrimental as some people are saying that it is. But with the comprehensive plan, I agree with you, Sissy, about this, that we do need to have measurable, achievable goals and a reference for us to see if we're falling low or moving forward. That is just logical in any type of growth. And so I'm, as a citizen, I'm behind you on that. Thank you.
Anybody else who cares? This public hearing will be continued through our meeting June 20. Let me read the ordinance before we move on. First reading, the ordinance of the city, an ordinance to the city, Port Angeles, Washington, adopting amendments to the comprehensive plan. And this hearing is continued through our meeting at June 20.
And Mr. Mayor, I guess one of the things I would like to, I guess, clarify for the folks out there, I know we looked into moving the houses. And to move a house was actually closer to $20,000. So it wasn't quite three or four, it was about $20,000.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, before we move on, there's a couple of comments that I'd like to make before this item closes for the evening. I do think it's extremely important for everyone to be aware the great depth of public input and participation that was involved with the creation of the comprehensive plan last year. And I just want to emphasize that we engaged this community in so many different ways, more ways than we have ever seen done before in a community process. So I greatly believe that this plan does in fact reflect the public vision. I certainly agree that it may need improvement. And there may be ways to improve the measurability of the plan. But I think it's important that this is an opportunity for a first reading of the document, that if staff is to bring back to council a revised or different document for approval at your next meeting, staff would greatly appreciate some clear direction as to the modifications that you expect to this document. That being said, as I did mention, we do plan to provide a condensed version of the document that will focus on measurability. But if there are specific changes to the plan that is before you, we need to know about those this evening.
Thank you, Nathan. Yes.
Yeah, I appreciate that reminder, Nathan, that there's hundreds and hundreds of citizens over the last year or so that came to meetings, town hall meetings, planning sessions, and had lots and lots of contribution to this. Some people may believe that the seven of us just sat down putting all this together with staff, and that certainly isn't the case. It was literally hundreds and hundreds of people helped contribute to this. I wholeheartedly, as I mentioned before, I agree, measurability is so important. But before we vote on this in two weeks, if there's a concern that there's not enough measurability, and I look through the implementation section, and I see 37 sections of measurability with timelines all built in, and I'm thinking, this is pretty darn good for measuring out if we're successful or not. If it's not enough for you, what I would really appreciate is that if you could come back with some more specifics so that we would have a better understanding of what a satisfactory document might be. Because right now, I think it could always get better. But what if they come back and redo 30% of it, as an example? Is that going to be good enough for you and specific enough? And I'm not putting that down. I'm just, you know, I just don't know where enough is or what should be the level of satisfaction over and above what they've already done. And I'd love to have more input on that before I vote next week.
Do you have anything, Mayor, too?
I would like to thank staff for this document. As other members of the city council, before I was on the council, I was on the planning commission. And I have watched the changes and the growth of the comprehensive plan. And what I have before me now is the finest document that I have seen since I've been on the council or the planning commission. I appreciate the fact that we really talked about this last year. And Sissy made some great points, and we took it to the public. We took it to the community. We got feedback. We worked on it. And this document, when we say this is a living document, it means it doesn't stop now. It doesn't stop with this. It's tremendously improved, and they give us guidelines and measurables and so much more than I've had to deal with in the past. But a living document also means that next year, when there's a city council with new members, that they'll have input. They'll have ideas. And it just keeps improving. As our, as our communities' needs change, then the living document is able to change with it. So I don't have any suggestions for the following two weeks, but I have spent a great deal of time reading what has been done and comparing it. And I can see some tremendous strides have been made in understanding and comprehending the comprehensive plan. So I'm ready to take this version for now with the understanding that it is a living document. And next year's council will have a lot of great input also.
Hey, I respect your presence there. If you have any specific question logistically about this matter, I would encourage you, in terms of a public comment, to be patient and take the opportunity to our second, excuse me, our public comment period coming up here shortly. And/or, and/or if you have a question relative to, maybe answer offline, but Nathan or Alson, while we're in the meeting.
There's, there's a specific question.
I can't, I have.
This is a public hearing. This is for give and take, I understand. This is not a public comment session. I don't, there's a give and take here. There's discrepancy between two figures, $4,000 for moving home and $20,000 for moving home. And I believe one, $4,000 is simply for moving a home and setting it up on blocks. And the other one is to set it up with electrical and plumbing and that sort of thing. So that's a difference in the $20,000 and $4,000. I think that's a important information. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. We are, Brad, you have any, you're with us still?
No, I don't have any specific additions to this document at the time.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, I do. So I do have some specifics that I could, you know, well, I guess I would like to see. So one, I do want to agree that a lot of the public was asked to participate in this in a lot of different formats. So, you know, so the public knows it wasn't something that was hidden in the back. It was, it definitely had a lot of public input. But as to the measurability, the level of service is really critical. And so if we can get on the level of service for each of the departments, for the things that they do, that would be a huge beginning. Because then at least we have a base of where we're, where we're at. One of the things that we were given, the fire department's report, and it says, you know, that the average overall response time for calls from dispatch is 5 minutes and 88 seconds. So, or 5.88, sorry. So one of the things that, that's just a number. So is that a good number or a bad number? How do we tell? How do we know that's really good and that we should be proud of it? Or how do we tell that that's not so good? So some of these things need to have, you know, some comparables. And those kind of informations to have. So if we can get a level of service, some comparables to know whether, you know, yes, it should take five minutes, or it should take 20 minutes. Or 20 minutes is okay, or you're not, it's like, we need to, you know, who's going to set these priorities? The fire list here shows the times that someone set that these are the times we're going to try to meet. So who set those times? And is that one of those policy issues that the council always set? Should it take us 18 minutes for a response or not? So these are the kind of bits of information that if they could be added to this thing in the next couple, in the next two weeks, because we've got two weeks, and we talked about the level of service for each department, that would help a lot. Because it would give us at least a base. But it's really, like I said, if they can just get the lay, however long it's going to take to get that, that would be really appreciated.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Brad.
I can speak to where some of the level of service numbers came from over the past. And where, let's take the fire one, for example. The level of service is proposed by the experts, the fire department officials. They go through a public review, they go through the city council's adoption. And each year, those are in the plan. And over time, they may change. But what you're measuring them against is what the expert level of service represents. That would be the same for transportation, through intersections, or anything else. One of the things about fire department's level of service has to do with how fast the fire expands within a certain period of time. And so that level of service is related to what kind of fire the fire department's going to have to face when they get to the scene. And for every additional minute, the danger and loss of property and potentially loss of lives increases. And so those are steps with not just the measure of well G, which is five minutes in 2010, and therefore would likely last five minutes now. It's related to public safety of personnel, of the public, private, of private property and lives. So these are things that are pretty well established.
Okay. That will be continued to June 20. So we'll be on to F2, which is the Wetlands Protection Ordinance. And this will be connected first reading, public hearing, which will be continued also to June 20. So I believe that.
Mr. Mayor and council, this item is relative also to the Growth Management Act date requirements. Within the seven-year update requirement timeframe, if you do not get your critical areas ordinances complete within the following year of that deadline, then you can be found to be noncompliant. We have reviewed critical area ordinances and found one ordinance to be in need of adjustment. And that ordinance is before you tonight. It's the wetland ordinance. Some of the, there are approximately three adjustments that are being made to that ordinance. Specifically, we are incorporating a definition of wetland that is consistent with state RCW. We are incorporating a change in reference being that some of the reference documents previously referenced in code no longer exist. So we've updated that to accurate and relevant versions of those documents. And then finally, we've included a definition of professional, sorry, qualified professional to that ordinance. Those ordinance, the ordinance changes did go before the planning commission and a public hearing. And at this point, staff is also recommending that council open the public hearing. Following the public hearing, continue the matter to the June 20 meeting after also conducting the first reading.
Do you remember, can you remember the council, any question?
I just had a comment that I want to thank staff for this updating. What I'm seeing here from staff, and what I'm reading, is when we get something from the Department of Ecology, staff apparently looked at it and handled it appropriately. It's not adding laborious new regulations upon our community, but it's tweaking what adjustments need to be made. So to me, this is a very thorough and thoughtful change. And I appreciate that it has a very balanced approach by staff. And I want to thank them for that.
Sissy, and then Brad, do you have any comments? I'll invite that.
So I guess my comment exactly is about that, that balanced approach. And what I would like to know is, it does look And what I would like to know is, it does look like it says on the report, the balanced approach to the Department of Ecology recommended changes that ensure the best available science protection of the area wetlands, while simultaneously protect from private property interests. So what I would like to know is, what was the original definition of wetlands and how did it get changed? You know, I guess I'd like to see a comparison of those two. What ecology said and how we modify it, so that way we can understand the changes that are there.
So council, on page 185, sorry, F185 of your packet, you actually see the prior definition of wetland, and it's listed in strike through at this point, but that is a definition previously accepted by the state that no longer is accepted by the state. And so we're essentially updating that with a definition that actually matches state RCW.
So this definition below, because I guess, and it was my understanding that it got, the ecology definition got modified, so that it's, so it's not just ecology's definition, this new definition is also something we wordsmithed, or not?
It is not. It is consistent with the state definition.
Okay, so it is directly with ecology. Great, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I've been working on these regulation changes as well in my practice, and the city doesn't create these definitions. They change at state law level, we're required to comply with state law, so we're not the ones that are generating or able to even wordsmith these without a tremendous amount of scientific analysis, which we can't provide and state does. So unless we're prepared to go down to legislature and argue with these, we are obligated to continue to follow state law.
Okay, I see no other hands here. Guys, let me, we'll open the public hearing on this matter. Again, anyone who wishes to speak specifically to this matter, please come forward, state your name and your address for the record.
Do we have a city map of the wetlands that exists currently? And has that ever been overlaid with the existed, the previous maps of wetlands that were ever done? Because I, I know my property was, you know, 1970, it was wetlands that was paved over. So do we have that? Because wouldn't that be valuable to have to show areas that we want to keep wetlands? Because that's how we replenish our water supply, right?
Yes.
So we do have maps of the wetlands, predominantly, there are some other jurisdictions in the U.S. Wildlife who actually documents and updates those maps, and those are certainly ones that we rely on as part of the database and that are actually referenced in the code, the wetland ordinance itself. I will tell you too, that we update and keep track of wetland delineations. So where a private entity comes in for development, whether it's a private homeowner or a developer coming in to develop a particular property and their wetland characteristics on that site, we would require them to do a wetland delineation that actually delineates the boundaries and required buffers for those specific wetlands. And then those areas actually get mapped relative to where they are within the city limits. I do want to caveat that the question and answer are not within the scope of what we're changing this evening.
Anybody else who would like to share a comment on this matter? Okay, this matter will, this public hearing will be continued to our media of June 20. Let me read the, let's just further comment to the council. Let me read the first reading. An ordinance to the city portages Washington revising time of 15, chapter 15.24, of the Portland's municipal code relating to wetland protection. A matter of housekeeping here for just a moment, I guess, remember the council. We've been at this stuff since about five something today. Would any of you care to take a short break before we leave work? They can hear the consensus of, so we're gonna, we're going to have a break until, about a five-minute break, please allow us to do that. We will continue the agenda back to public comment.
He's in the washroom.
He was here a moment ago. We're gonna, we're gonna...
He's going fishing.
So we will go back to the public comment period of our agenda. I have the names of two individuals who have signed the public comment sign-up sheet. First is Carl Rice. If you could come forth. Again, Carl, your name, address for the record. Thank you for, if you would, to share a public comment.
My name is Carl Rice, 1004 North Old Nelson Way, Port Angeles. This is my first council meeting, I think, for years, and first time I've ever spoke. And I'm kind of thankful to be here tonight because of the way you honor the citizens of this town and the great music and all the wonderful things you do to help people be recognized. And first of all, I came here for the alleys I gave a list to plenty of people. But I was trying to get, I was real thirsty because I knew I was going to be speaking pretty soon, so I went to get some water. And I thought I'd mention this, your water fountain's a little, it doesn't work, there's not enough pressure to make it work, so I'm not here to complain, but I do notice things. And however, I am, I'm here about the, about the alleys. Playing the letter I mentioned I had written to the city four, three years ago, and two years before that I spoke to the public works director about the roads. So it's probably been a couple of years since I had been thinking about these alleys, and I've talked to a lot of people, so this is not just me speaking, it's others. And so it's probably been seven years since our alleys have been touched, because I know that's a problem. And I noticed, I noticed here on this agenda, it's, anybody, can anybody read that? On consent agenda, number two, old pavement repairs project contract for the roads, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Will that include the alleys?
No, that was for roads that were even worse, for emergencies.
Well, there's no worse roads in our alleys in Port Angeles, trust me, there really aren't. You know, the city is full of volunteers, couldn't we just get, at least get some crushed rock? I mean, those alleys are so bad, and I know a lot of people that are here that have older relatives that drive these alleys, I mean, and I think if they put in the paper on Sunday, they have that column that says, what do you think of this? If they put, what do you think of our alleys? I'm sure we'd get some pretty not-nice comments on our alleys. And I know, and I've talked to some people, I know that you're working on this and the city's concerned, but I mean, those roads are so bad, I mean, just, I mean, I'm not here to complain, I'd be on a work party, glad to be on a work party, I can help get a lot of people on a work party. And also, I'm also here for about the street, the parking stripes. Am I for my...
Well, we would ask you to summarize your comments.
I thought I had 15 minutes.
I know.
Sorry. Okay, the parking stripes downtown, they haven't been marked for years, and I mentioned that five years ago also by the public works. If you just have a mark that people can use better, they can, they can park better. In a period of a while, if you lose two parking spots, you know, you can't see where to park, you go down there anytime, you'll see that the parking is, they're out of line, I mean, you can't get parking spot. And so, but back to the roads.
At some point, want to try to do?
The city would have liability issues with what is constructed or what is done with the alleys. Again, we have the transportation benefit district sales tax ballot coming up on one office is where that can make a tremendous difference in funding.
Will you bring that tax to the people? Will you bring that tax to the people? Did you mention that, all the alleys?
Yes.
You can do that?
Yes, yes.
Now, do I need to come back again, or is that...
You can.
No, you can come back.
You have a second public comment here, you're welcome to speak at that if you would.
Well, okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. David Mayberry, Marbury.
Second comment. David Mayberry.
Reality check, part two. Dan McKean doesn't need me to defend him, however, I will not stand by and let a council member take cheap shots at him. Position two with him. Public documents requests clearly show that there were over 30 days' notice as to the venue location for the strategic planning session at OMC. Complaining about poor management is a reflection onto you. Complaining about a conflict of interest in the venue for this session is on par with stating you cannot have lunch at OMC's cafeteria because your wife works there. Are these complaints a cop-out? Hell, yeah, it's a cop-out. Absence remains unexcused. Position five, Meredith. You look to Dan McKean in explaining your absence. Let's refresh the basics. Dan works for you, you work for us. If you are getting called out on the carpet, address your employer. You stated that you work full-time and are a single parent with several kids who do a lot of stuff. As clearly stated in my previous statement, as for example, if a council member were an overworked and underpaid mother of several underprivileged children who happen to be a lesbian and a minority, she would have gotten a response of tough. Let me be the first to welcome you to the progressive era when I say to you, tough. Absence remains unexcused. As a side note, if you would however like to start being a council member for all the residents of Port Angeles, try a couple of things. First, stop marching lockstep behind a council member who marches lockstep behind a public action committee from SWIM. Second, ask your employer to room, to remove their illegal four-foot-by-eight-foot campaign sign. It is not a First Amendment right, it is an ignorance for democracy. Additionally, it addresses the 3.5 million visitors to our community with a very large sign that says, "You are not welcome here."
Those are the only individuals who have signed the sign-up sheet for our first public comment period. I want to extend invitation to anybody else who wants this right now, but we do have a full agenda, we have not yet gotten into yet. Is there anybody else who would care to take a moment now? Otherwise, I'm going to close this portion of our public comment period and allow us to move on to our agenda. Be reminded, there will be a second public comment period at the latter part of our That takes us to late items for the future agendas, and members of the council or staff, if there's anything you would want to add to that.
Mr. Mayor and council, today we did receive a letter directed to the mayor from the Olympic Community Action Program. They have requested from council a letter, an urgent letter of support relative to community service block grant funding, which they rely on to support their operations. If council desires to direct a staff draft of a letter of support for the mayor's signature, that's something that we could discuss later this evening.
Okay, you okay with that?
They're under consideration.
Yeah, I'm considering, which is I too.
Okay.
Brad, do you have anything you'd want us to read?
Not tonight, no.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's go on to item E, consent agenda. Is there any item on the five item consent agenda that we, remember the council had us pull off before the discussion before I read it?
Pull number five, please.
That's consultant agreement on utility cost of service study.
Yes.
Sissy, did I see you reading?
Yes.
Okay, well, let me read the first four. Expense expenditure report from May 6, 2017 through May 26, 2017, an amount of $10,792.212 in 2017 pavement, pavement repair project contract, CON-2017-03, final acceptance, 2017 electric utility whole testing project, award contract, and civic field group replacement project final acceptance. Motion to approve this, Brad.
Okay.
Motion's been made in second, do you have any comments or questions?
Yes, on item number four, I'd like to add, hooray.
There would be two hurays. Great job. Everybody, everybody just go by civic field. Not just to watch baseball, but to see what wonderful, good, it's a great job. Okay, motion's been made in second, and to approve the first four items on the consent agenda, all those things, do you say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Brad. So let's go back to consent agenda, item number five, that is a consultant agreement where utility costs are served a study.
For the record, Craig, could you, I had a problem with the cost of this study and why we weren't doing it in-house, and I think that the public needs an explanation from you as to why we are going out of house to do this study.
Sure. So one reason is to have an unbiased third-party analysis, doing these cost-of-service studies, because it will impact significantly on the finances of several industrial users, the mill, the state, rear-end channel, and then the drive hatchery. Secondly, this type of cost of service where industrial, industrial customers have never been done before by the city, it's fairly unique. There are very few municipalities that have industrial water and plant as unique as this. So we really don't have the expertise in-house to tackle something of this, or the manpower. Whereas FCS Group, this is, this is what they do for their business, so they have the ability to reach out to their past work and look at industrial processes that they've done in the past and use them as a basis for moving forward with our industrial cost of service. So those are the couple of reasons why we chose to use a consultant. If it was just a simple cost of service for electrical or municipal water or stormwater, where we have...
studies because it will impact significantly on finances of several industrial users, the mill, the state, rirey channel, and then the drive hatchery. Secondly, this type of cost-of-service for industrial customers have never been done before by the city. It's fairly unique. There are very few municipalities that have industrial water and plant as unique as this. So, we really don't have the expertise in-house to tackle something like this, or the manpower. Whereas FCS Group, this is what they do for their business. So, they have the ability to reach out to their past work and look at industrial processes that they've done in the past and use them as a basis for moving forward with our industrial cost-of-service. So, those are a couple of reasons why we chose to use it as a consultant. If it was just a simple cost-of-service for electrical, or municipal water, or stormwater, where we have lots of data, lots of algorithms already, and it's fairly standard processes, we're all municipalities do this analysis, yes, we could do it in-house, and that's what we're doing in-house on our upcoming utility rates. But this is extremely unique process and extremely unique industrial system that the National Park Service has built for us.
Thank you.
Ceci, you also had a concern?
I do, and just for the public's sake, I do work with the Lower Elacolm Tribe, but because this is a unique, unbiased review, that's one reason I'm not accusing myself. The other thing I wanted to bring up is that when speaking with staff about this, one of my biggest concerns was to make sure that there was, the staff time gets included in this cost-of-service specifically to take a look at this in the long term. Because this is a very unique project. It's never been done before. I do not know when the next time we'll do it. So, if we can take that long view of in the next 20 years, what are we going to need to make sure that all those things are included, I would really appreciate that.
Yes, so staff time will be included. It's a definite cost to the city, and that needs to pass on to the industrial water users, both the operational staff time, the engineering staff time, administrative staff time. That'll all be included.
Okay. Thank you.
Brad, do you have any comments, questions?
No comments.
All right, seeing no other hands raised.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consultant agreement for utility cost of service study.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion been made. Seconded, to...
Let me read, let me read the entire recommendation, please. I'd like to revise my motion to approve and authorize the city manager to sign an agreement with FCS Group to perform the work described in the attached scope of work for an amount not to exceed $41,885 and to make minor modifications to the agreement if necessary.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Good thoughtful legislation. Okay, motion been made. Seconded, for the comments. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Okay, thank you. That takes us to ordinances not required. First is the ethics ordinance revision, first discussed at a previous meeting and continued to this evening, is found on G1 in your packet.
The council, the council's previously discussed the ethics ordinance on a couple of occasions. Last time, you directed staff to bring back an ordinance to you that adopted the recommendation of our insurance authority, CIA, and we have done that. I think the ordinance reflects as closely as we can the wishes of council as discussed at the last meeting.
Any further questions, comments?
I'd just like to make one comment here, that, one, this was a joy to read since nine pages were completely struck through, so I appreciate that. And for the public's sake, there's just two things in here that really matter, is that, one, that we're just adopting the ethics of the state code of ethics, using this for municipal officers, and, two, that we're going to get training every year on this. So, we're just grabbing the state code, we're using it, and then we're going to get training. That's basically it.
Brad, do you have any comments or?
I've participated in the last discussion, and I appreciated that the council came to discuss this on that. That's a good step forward.
Okay. Let me read the first reading of this, and we will continue this matter to our meeting of June 20. An ordinance to the city, excuse me, an ordinance to the city of Port Angeles, Washington, amended in Chapter 2.78 of the Port Angeles Municipal Code relating to the code of ethical conduct. Okay, that takes us to G2, Park Improvement Fund. As council package beginning, G2.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. The city currently has a revenue account called the Linkin Park Improvement Fund. That's created in 1995. It's taken revenue from the trees that were moved from the port. And so, we kind of want to do something similar with MacAthletics, money received from our field maintenance or our facility use agreement. And that's money that comes in and put in this account, and then we can solely spend that on capital improvement in the specific field. Instead of creating an additional revenue account, we wanted to change the title of the Linkin Park Improvement Fund and just call it the Park Improvement Fund. The monies in the funds will have its own dedicated line item to keep the accounts separate. So, tonight, I'm recommending the council to conduct the first hip reading of the ordinance amended in Chapter 3.15.200, the Portland Municipal Code, and continue action on June 20, 2017, City Council Meeting, First Second Meeting, adoption of ordinance.
And definitely, Mayor, a question?
This is a great idea. I really appreciate the thought being spun into it. It makes perfectly good sense, and I will support it when we have an opportunity. Both of them.
Thank you.
And the council, we were winning.
Thank you. Corey, can you report on Parks and Rec Advisory Committee's findings on this?
Nothing but positive comments.
Again, nothing's written up. That's why I asked. Thank you.
I have a good observation for those of you in the audience. The city has worked very hard to build a positive, productive, proactive relationship with MacAthletics. Civic Field improvements have already been made there, I think are quite wonderful. And this is, Corey, you are again to be commended, your staff to be, I think visionary in this regard. And I do not know how old Civic Field is. When was it built?
1978. The original building was built in 1940.
1940?
This was progress.
Oh, really? Was it that long ago?
Yes, yes.
It's amazing. Anyway, please, avail yourself of the opportunity to go by it. You're taking a baseball game, too, of course, but it's newly painted. It's going to only get better. I view this relationship growing. I hope it grows.
Mayor, if I could say one thing real quick, I appreciate the comments, especially towards my staff, but this was a group effort with everybody on the dais, so they deserve that as well.
You stepped out of the way. Okay, let me read this, and this matter will be continued on to June 20. An ordinance to the city of Port Angeles, Washington, amended in Chapter 3.15, other Portland Municipal Code relating to funds.
So, if anyone has a question?
So, we're now to item I, inter-agency agreement with the city of Seattle for UBIT services, seeking approval. As item I, you want in your packet?
All right, so, what we have today is an inter-agency agreement between the city of Port Angeles and Seattle, city of Seattle, for the use of their underbridge inspection truck. Though we might not have very good alleys, we have extremely good bridges that our street funding has gone to, and we're mandated to do inspections using a UBIT truck. And a UBIT truck is has a look to extend underneath the bridge and inspect the bottom. Through the sergeant engineers, the work of sergeant engineers and our city engineers, they came upon the option to use city of Seattle UBIT trucks, the savings of about $5,000 as opposed to contracting privately-owned UBIT trucks. And so, we're proposing to this council to allow city managers to sign this agreement, and then we can take advantage of the Seattle, city of Seattle, UBIT truck within their schedule, but at reduced rates when compared to private company to lease their vehicles.
Any questions for members and staff? Brad, do you have any?
I like to pick it's a win-win situation. We get to help find the right cost of the city of Seattle's trucks, and it's a benefit to us. Can't hardly lose there.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Is this our staff that's inspecting the bridge? I realize that it's Seattle's operating the truck. Are they doing the inspection, or are we?
No, so we already have a contract with sergeant engineers, and part of that contract would include the use of a UBIT truck. So, we'd be, we'd either go out and hire a private company, lease a private UBIT truck, or we can use the city of Seattle UBIT truck. But it's not city staff, it's the sergeant engineers who will be doing the inspections.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no other hands go up. Chair, with entertaining motion.
I move to approve and authorize the city manager to sign the five-year inter-agency agreement with the city of Seattle, and to make minor modifications to the agreement to me if we have an area of the city that is frequently, has problems with trees knocking the power lines down, we should maybe consider undergrounding some of that.
Yeah, thank you.
I would love to have us do that.
It would be wonderful to slowly work on getting rid of all the lines, but I know that's really, really expensive. So that's, again, what I would look forward to from Public Works is to get those level of services, so that we can add them to the comprehensive plan, little by little.
Counselor, Mayor Meredith?
For the fact that these folks are providing prevailing wage, if you divide out this three-man crew, you're actually getting, it seems like a lot of $214 an hour, but that is an incredible value, considering they're also using the truck and the chipper, and they're not charging a load cost. That's about $70 an hour for each employee. I'd be willing to bet hours late plus fringe is probably $55 or more, and for that value is a good deal.
That's what I thought for that one. So I had a problem with this a few years ago, and there's a different pay scale. It's not billing trades work on this tree trimming. So it's not a typical labor scale of like $55 or $56 bucks an hour just for labor. These rates, when you look at it, I had a hard time. I mean, Craig can probably talk to it, or Nathan, there's a different scale of prevailing wage. It's not billing trades work. So that got me a few years ago on that. That's what I said, too.
Any other questions or concerns?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve and authorize the city manager to sign a contract with this Funda Tree Expert Company for 2017 tree trimming, contract CON-2017-11, the rate of $214 an hour and the amount not to exceed $125,000, and to make minor modifications to the agreement if necessary.
Second amendment.
Motion been made, and seconded. Further comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to make one comment. This has come up every year since I've been on council, and I've questioned it in the past, but I have, it has been, it has gone up incrementally as wages rise. So the cost, the cost now and the cost when I was first on council are not that far apart, but they have been increased, just as the cost increases. And like, just like we give, you know, we give wage increases every year, so I've just seen small incremental increases that have been in line with other increases, so I support this.
Okay. Motion's been made, seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. That takes us to Marine Drive Sewer Repair Project WW01-16, request for award. Craig, I guess that's you again.
Yes, this is a capital facility project for the sewer system, where we are doing some repairs to the sewer line that goes, sewer line and manholes that goes from approximately the mill to the base of Hill Street. The issue that we have is the hydrogen sulfide in the sewer coming from along, on the Coast Guard Station Long Island, it's been corroding the sewer piping. In one case, it actually, the top of the pipe gave way, and we had to move it to repair several months ago. But instead of digging, excavating out the pipeline and putting a new pipeline in, which in that area is environmentally sensitive and archeologically sensitive, we're using a new, well, it's not really new technology, but it's a new technology for the city, where we're going to do cured-in-place plastic piping, where you line the, contractor lines the pipe in place, and so there's no excavation required, and the new lining will prevent the continued degradation of the pipe from hydrogen sulfide. Not only is piping being lined, but also the manholes, manhole lids are being coated with this, with this plastic coating to prevent further degradation. So this was briefed at the Utility Advisory Committee. They recommended that we move forward to council. We have worked with Flow Technologies in the past, they've done videotaping of our stormwater and sewer systems, so they're familiar with our system, we're familiar with their processes, and we're very comfortable with their operations, and we're glad they lived a little bit on this project. With that, I'll take any questions.
Cecily?
Yes, and that early, we did talk about this, and it was, you know, everybody was pretty happy about this issue, but I know that this, some of this line was built in 1969, and could you remind me again how long, how much longer it's going to last because we're doing this to this pipe?
This should last, I'm thinking, 30, 40 years. I mean, it's, the new materials are, the new material relying this work were built to withstand the hydrogen sulfide.
Yeah, so this is a great investment for the city, for the dollars.
If we went the excavation route, and we started digging along there, and we did whatever we discovered, then costs increase and delays would skyrocket the price.
Mr. Mayor, any questions?
A lot of folks actually ask, but there's a lot of babysitting going on at the bottom of Hill Street at that pump station constantly, and I'm going to assume now that's what this is for, and we're going to be able to, that'll start being able to run by itself, or is that a high maintenance spot?
So that's another, that's another project we have on the capital facility plan is replacement of pump station number three. But before we can replace that pump station, we need to increase the size of the pipes that are going from that pump station three at the bottom of Hill Street to pump station number four, which is just built downtown. It's, the piping is undersized, and we have a project, a couple of projects in place to first increase the size of that. Once that's complete, then we replace that pump station.
So is that ruining that pump also then, or is that pump designed to...
No, I think that the pipe, the biggest cost of improving that pump station is the replacement of the piping. The actual replacement of the pump station itself, pumps, is a very small part of the project.
Thank you.
And that's seven years out.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Fulton, I'd just like to thank you for the verbal, that this did come out of the UAC, but I guess my thing to staff is that I'd like reference given to the volunteers in our briefings, in our agenda packets, that refer that this has come out of the proper advisory committee, so that the volunteers that want to follow along, maybe perhaps online, they can see that their actions are being taken, are being recognized around there. So there's, there's a lot of people that serve on our various committees, I think, that deserve recognition. Thank you.
Any further comments or questions? Chair, would you entertain a motion if you'd be able to? Is that right?
Here, nobody else, I'll be happy to make a motion to approve and authorize the city manager to number one, award and sign a construction contract with Flow Technologies, Inc. for the Marine Drive Sewer Repair Project, number WW0116, for a contract amount of $170,555.07, including applicable taxes, and to make minor modifications to the contract if necessary, and, number two, issue change orders to the contract in an aggregate amount not to exceed the available contingency of $35,000, provided the city manager report the change orders to the city council at its next regular meeting following issuance of the change order.
Second.
Most who have made it seconded, further comments or questions? There are none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed if any, passes unanimously. That takes us to J.3, a second amendment to the professional services contract regarding the Elwa Dam Removal Project. I believe that's Bill Rohr, J.5.
Yes, thank you. So in 1992, when the United States Congress approved the removal of the Elwa Dams, in legislation that passed, Congress inserted a requirement that the removal of the dams would not impact adversely the city's quality and quantity of water that we receive from the Elwa River at that time. So what they were saying is it was the obligation of the National Park Service, if they removed the dams, to protect the quality and quantity of the water as opposed to 1992. After quite a bit of study, the dams were actually removed in 2012, beginning in 2012 and through 2014. Unfortunately, the facilities that were built by the Park Service on the river to protect the city's water failed, and they weren't adequate. And as a result of that, the city has been in negotiations with the Park Service to remediate that situation. And a year ago, the council approved hiring the law firm of Lane Powell, and the particular reason for hiring that law firm is that they have specialized expertise in federal claims and federal litigation. We certainly do not want to have litigation with the Park Service over this issue, and we're trying very hard not to. We are in settlement negotiations with them. Those negotiations are in fact continuing, and we'll have a important meeting with them coming up in June. At the same time, Lane Powell has been very valuable to us in the strategy for our negotiations, and also in filing a claim against the Park Service. So the city has filed a formal tort claim against the Park Service. That was done because it was necessary in order to protect our rights against statute of limitations of the bills. And Lane Powell was instrumental in that, they have been instrumental in the strategy for the negotiations. As we have done with several other of the outside consultants, we periodically bring these back before council, so that we don't ask council to approve a five-year commitment with a consultant. We usually do these in increments, so that's what this is. We have identified a scope of work that will, that will allow Lane Powell to continue the work that they have been doing to help us protect the city's water rights. That scope of work will carry them through the bounds of 2017. We've identified a budget for that purpose as well. So this is for them to continue the work they are doing in helping us try and resolve this question without litigation. At the same time, we recognize that we do have a limitation imposed on the city as to the final date when we must reach a settlement, or file our claim, of course. So we are working within those parameters, and Lane Powell is instrumental in doing that, and this is simply continuation of contract to allow them to continue that.
And members of the council, I have any questions?
Not so much for attorney-bored, but the community on this. I think that it's important that this come out in a regular agenda item, staff, and I'm sure my words will ring true in a few minutes, but I believe the entire council's going to support this. This is, this is about retaining our water rights that the federal government guaranteed us, I believe it was under the Elwa Act. I applaud staff for continuing to represent the city for our future water. There will be one day in our future that water will be considered gold, and I think that our actions tonight are going to help ensure that. So I will be supporting this shortly. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Kidd, any other assistance?
This is critical for our town. In 1992, our then-mayor, Jim Halat, testified before Congress that in order for us to agree to the dams coming down, we have to know, and they had to agree, to protect the water for the people of the City of Port Angeles. That agreement was made. Quality and quantity of all water was guaranteed to us. However, the congressman at that time has retired, the superintendent of the park, that was party to that agreement, has retired. We've had several superintendents in that since then. Our new congressman wasn't even aware of the agreement. So we must protect the water for our city, for our citizens, for our families, and our businesses, and our future. So this is important. We find ourselves in a position where we're having to negotiate with the park, and we will fight for our water rights that we have been promised, we have been guaranteed, but as a council, we have to step up, and we have to make sure we protect the water for the citizens. And so I will be supporting this.
Cecily Brooke, and then Brad, if you have any questions, please feel free to follow Cecily.
So I'd also like to clarify for folks that, so the Park Service has tried in some ways to get some of, some of this negotiation. So they built us a water plant, and they said, okay, we're done, you know, dam's down, here, we take that water plant, you guys do it. And we're like, whoa, whoa, guys, it's a little more expensive to run than what we had, you know, a gravity line versus now having to deal with it. So some of the issues here have to do as well with the cost that's going to get passed on to everybody down the line. And so one of the things that I know for me that always kind of bothers me is the fact that, you know, we now, this, our contract is now not to exceed $470,500. I mean, that's going to be a large enough number, but we're talking about millions and millions and millions of dollars in the future. And so, so I just wanted to just give you that perspective that, yes, although $400-some-thousand is a big number compared to what we have, or what we could lose, the number's way higher. And so that's also why we're supporting this.
Cecily, Mr. Mayor, have you got a comment? Please, Brad.
So we've been involved in this for a long time, as has the National Park Service, and the reality of that promise is from the federal government, it's not from the National Park Service. The funds have been left through the National Park Service, so they have been left to have to be the party that we have to deal with. But I don't want the community to feel like we're adversaried with the National Park Service. I think what we're trying to do is make sure that the system works. It won't do us any good to have a water right if we can't properly get the water from the river. So I support this, I agree with what we've got, you know, and the council is pretty united, that we need to protect our water rights.
Thank you, Brad. For me, this is all about the integrity of the original agreement. And number two, it's all about the simple reality that we are obligated to provide clean, fresh, potable water, and right now, there's a question whether we can. Predictably, daily. We have a firm, a firm here that is well-qualified to assist us in these further discussions, and I would urge the council to endorse this action today. and I would urge the council to endorse this action today. But in a way, back to when, 1992, Bill, this was, was it 1992 when the original agreement was? When was the original efforts made to restore the Elwha River? I mean, go away with that to 1992. But what was set on that day is applicable in 1992, as it is on June 5th or 6th, 2017. Any further questions before I call for a motion? See, now, if you made a motion, understand?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize and approve, approve the city manager to execute a second amendment to the agreement with Lane Powell, E.C., in accordance with the terms described in this memo, and to make any minor modification to the agreement if necessary.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. That takes us to council reports. I don't ever remember which one I start. Let me start on my right lead. Actually, Lee, let's start with Brad.
I put it on the right.
Brad, you go first, and you go home.
Although I want to second public comment very soon. But the main comment I have is that I appreciate the opportunity in my absence to, you know, continue to weigh in on these issues through the phone conversation, so thank you very much.
You're welcome, Brad. Lee, I'm sorry, Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to address not only the member of our community that had a few words about council member Meredith and I, but I want to address the greater community and let everyone know that I do respect your right to address our duties as a city representatives. Mr. Mabry, in fact, I argued for your right to do so, which is why Port Angeles City Council now has two period comment periods. For the record, as a certified commercial journeyman plumber with a medical gas ticket, not only does my wife work at Olympic Medical Center, but I do too, with my last date of employment at the new medical office building this past January. My conflict of interest and the fact that I declare it should reassure you that I'm being transparent in my duties representing you. Thank you.
Mr. Gase.
I just want to report that council member Brook and I had a delightful morning at the farmer's market Saturday. Not quite as much traffic, and it was a little bit on the cool side, but still had a chance to visit with a few of the citizens, and that's all I have to report today.
I'd give you a hand.
Wow, what a week in Port Angeles. Wow. We had the Lefties, and the stadium was packed, and the half, the town was there. It was awesome. So we are, we are a baseball town. We've always been a baseball town, but now we are a baseball town. So, hooray for the Lefties, and the wonderful positive impact they're having, wonderful family entertainment for our town. And then the North Olympic Peninsula Marathon, Discovery Marathon, thousands of people come to Port Angeles, thousands, with their families, and they're from all over the country, and little kids run in. I did participate in the marathon this year. Well, I gave out a medal or two. I could always say, I made this first page, and that's a big. I ran around the block to do that. But it's fabulous, people, happy people, families, and healthy. Come because of the beauty of our community. So summer started, people are coming, everyone loves Port Angeles, it's terrific. Thank you.
Mr. Meredith.
Being over at the baseball fields most nights, if you haven't been that direction, and yes, Mr. Coleman does work for us, if you go by the BMX track, you will notice it is cleaned up, it's painted, the track is cleaned up, and there are by far many more cars there than I've ever seen before. You wanted to pass on that on June 24th, they're having Olympic Day racing, and that's a Saturday. Signups are from 3:00 to 4:00, and it's free membership and free racing to anyone. If you don't want to race, or you don't have the time to stop by, I encourage you to at least drive by and check out the new facility, not new facility, but refurbished facility. And it's something that folks want to come to, and I think that as a community, we should be proud of how it looks, and that it's something for our young kids to do. Like, we're often told that our young kids don't have anything to do, that's why they're getting into trouble, and there are things to do out there. It's parents' job to be with those kids, to support them, and to help them find things to do that are more productive. Thank you.
Cissy.
All right, just a couple of things as to the farmer's market. So we went there, and we did see a couple of friends, but as to discussing city issues, it was very lovely. So one of the things we were talking about was potentially the people who come to the farmer's market is a certain type of folks, and it really does exclude, I think, a lot of others. And I don't know if that's our best venue for us. I know we've mentioned it before. It might be worthwhile taking another look to see whether, you know, maybe do we have, I don't know, office hours on a Friday or something that's during the daytime for people who are not working during daytime, but here we have this venue at nighttime. I know that the farmer's park hits the weekend, but it really was really slow. Anyway, so it was just a thought. And then the other thing is, yes, I did get to see the Lefties. In addition, down at the Lower Elwha Tribe, the new Billy White Shoes Memorial Baseball Park is open. It's a youth athletic facility. It's also gorgeous. I was really surprised how gorgeous Civic Field looked, and like I said, this new field is also open as well. So I think you got to call the recreation folks there to schedule. So we are increasing, and more things are happening.
I had, I had an extraordinary week last week. Highlighted by managing to throw a baseball, as a then-former baseball player, I was, had the privilege and extended opportunity to throw out the first pitch at the Lefties' baseball game the other night. And I really so desired to throw it 60 feet, six inches like I used to back some years ago, that I was able to throw it approximately 12 feet in the right direction with the assistance of the managing partner of the Victoria Harbor Cats and the owner, part-owner of the Lefties, Matt Acker, and our own Cory Dobecat.
I would say it was 12 feet, six inches.
Whatever it was, and I was, I managed to stay upright and headed it in the right, at least generally the right direction was one of the highlights of Patrick Downey's life. But for me, ultimately, it wasn't about the baseball game. It was about building community. That there was what, Cory, what was the announced crowd? I don't know, was around?
Announced crowd was about 19, but I would certainly say there's at least 2,000, 2,200 happy people.
Yeah, it was more than, it was a big, but it was about people joining together, being a community. And for me, that was, and so is the Olympic Marathon. It's about building community. And by the way, so is what we did tonight. Thank you for being here. So that takes us to information. L, city manager, active city manager, Nathan, do you have some things?
Mr. Mayor and council, tonight I would like to join council in commending the excellent work that the Parks and Recreation Department did in moving forward Civic Field in a very tight timeframe, juggling a lot of different projects and improvements. That community event was so important to our community. The facility is something that I know all of us attending that event took a great deal of pride in, and I think Mr. Bellicat deserves a lot of credit for ensuring that that happened. I do have one other item this evening, and I'd like to turn it over to Director Fulton, who's going to introduce a very important new employee for us this evening.
I take pleasure tonight in introducing the new city engineer, Teresa Reed Jennings. We stole her away from City of Pasco, where she worked several years as the senior engineer there, and previous to that, she owned her own engineering firm, private sector. So she brings with her both municipal experience and private experience, which we are looking to tap into to improve our process and procedures and move the city forward. So thank you for accepting her offer.
Okay, and we'll now take us to item M, second public comment period. Brad, are you still with us?
I am. I'm still here.
Okay, well, we're gonna, we'll see if we can get down here before 9:00. Second public comment period, anybody who wishes to have, have you heard, please come forward.
While we're talking about community building, excuse me, I'm still Dale Wilson, I still about in West End. While we're talking about community building, I agree and support all of those things that you mentioned. I wanted to bring a couple of historical events to you. One, you already mentioned, the opening of the Lefties' baseball team. The second is the first live coverage of a sporting event by the Peninsular Public Television in the history of Port Angeles. I'm pleased to say that we were able to, on very short notice, get a crew from the Skill Center out and get sent out and carry the game live, and I'm pleased to say that it was the highest online attendance viewing that we've ever had. We had thousands of people watching online. One of the things that we did was make the baseball players, as you know, they come from all over the country, baseball players do, and we made them aware a day or so ahead of time that we were going to try to cover the game, gave them the online address so they could alert their wives, girlfriends, family at home. And so I think that has a lot to do with their, having that many people come and watch the game online. But also, that invites people to come out and partake of the beauty of Port Angeles. And we do several promos for the area during the game, so this is something we look forward to doing more and more of. And I've got to say one more thing about this group at the North Olympic Peninsula Skill Center. It was my great joy, and one of the highlights of my life, Mayor, was to accompany these nine young professionals from the Skill Center who were nominated for an Emmy Award in sport programs. There was thousands of entries, there was three nominees across this area, there was three nominees, and our Skill Center crew was one of the nominees. And I'm sad to say they didn't win, but I'm pleased to tell you they looked their part. A friend of Papa made available the funding for each of them to have a tuxedo, each of them to have meals, each of them to have lodging. So we were able to go down and stay in a great hotel, attend, and you wouldn't know that they weren't from Hollywood, because they all did a great job. They would go out and they'd shake hands with the people. These are the people that they know they're going to be calling for jobs, and so they went out and they shook hands, they made good eye contact, they asked good questions, they asked good follow-up questions, they collected the business cards, which will be put into a pile, so that when they do have technical questions or career questions, they have somebody that they can go talk to that they already know because they've met them at this Emmy Awards banquet.
That was wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Appreciate that. Anybody else? See somebody standing back and say aye.
David Mabry, 1014, Georgiana. Go green or no home. Last week, I, as well as millions of others around the world, were devastated in hearing that President Trump had pulled the U.S. from the Paris Accord. This is a huge step back as the United States is ranked between the first and second leading source of greenhouse gas emissions on this planet. Luckily for us, this little section of the world that we live in is known as the Pacific Coast, Washington, Oregon, and California, has formed a pact with New York to continue honoring the Paris Accord and its stand against climate change. This means that we can bring this issue down to a local level where we, as citizens, can have a voice and an active role in fighting climate change. In a town where Amado is, where the mountains meet the sea, we should be very, very concerned with the local ecological environment and the impact of global warming. At the recent Claloon Progressives Coalition monthly meeting, this problem was discussed in great detail, with great concern being voiced by all. We agree that we will stand united and strong in doing what we can and must in order to protect the earth. So what is the city council's plan for handling climate change? And don't say it isn't an issue that affects us because it sure as heck does. We all need clean air, water, and soil to survive, and by starting local, we become global. This quote I'm going to end with, written by my wife Kristen, can mean different things to different people. The heart of it is, "We are all in this together. Stay in the light." No less in this regard for the need to stand apart and refuse to walk down a darkened path. I never stand alone, but a part of something bigger, brighter, older than a thousand suns. I pledge my oath to change, the only constant, and whatever directions it may lead. People, planet, progress. Keep moving forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Anyone else? Okay, the, I'll close the second public comment period. Motion for internment?
I'm to adjourn.
Most have been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and goodnight.
Pleasant dreams.